I'd like to call a special meeting of the Northland County Township Board of Commissioners for Thursday, November 2nd, 2017 at 7:24 PM to order a roll call.
Wisher Harold.
Here.
Wisher Hykes.
Here.
Wisher Patani.
Here.
Wisher Gray.
Here.
Wisher Fasenda.
Here.
Wisher Dussera.
Here.
Wisher Martina.
Here. Everybody please rise for pleasure of the evening.
My pleasure. The agents of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anybody would like to speak tonight, please sign the book at the podium. And remember this meeting is being electronically recorded and video streamed. We have 1:10 on pretty evening, Mr. George Rain.
Hi gentlemen, my name is George Rain and I'm the owner of Uncommon Favor, which is my holding company for Rain Remodeling and Restoration. We were approved, I believe it was on October 2nd, engineer came to the planning commission meeting, we had five votes that approved us to redefine our property. We're looking to put an office through the Turnpike Commission on the corner of Aurora Road and Route 30. Since we had that approval, I spent probably about $15,000 prepping the site, getting it ready for just making sure the sewage is all tied in, just cleaning up the property, doing landscaping, putting topsoil and mulch in. My family, we've lived in this community for over 60 years. My dad started our company in 1956. I went to Norton High School and everything I tried to do is to do it right. I don't know if anybody ever seen any of our vehicles going up and down the road or if we've done work for any of you or your neighbors or families, but we have a very nice business. We do business pretty much all over the state. We've been working out of our home and I have about 12 salesmen that work for me. We have about 10 crews and I need to have an office. And I went actually to buy that property, see who owned it, and then I found out the Turnpike Commission owned it. So then I, it's taken about seven months to get them to agree to rent it out to me. And so we have like a seven-year term until the extension we go through. If anybody's driven by there, I have some pictures that I could give each one of you for a little, just to show what it looked like when we started, what it looks like now. But once we had, some of the brakes came on, we were going to come to, I believe it was the Commissioners' meeting, which we were told to come to, and I don't do this all the time. But we got approved, the Planning Commission, and everything is done. We've got Lieutenant Wire at the site, and that's with Dave at the site. And I want to get, I want to get it on there before the snow flies. It's a modular unit, which I'm remodeling, it's going to be nice, it's going to be beautiful. I don't have, there were concerns, I was told, of it being like a job trailer or something on wheels. I only have a seven-year lease, so I'm not looking to build and spend a lot of money and tear it down in seven years. But it's going to be portable, it's not going to look portable. I'm going to have skirting around it. The color scheme, which I wanted to get these pictures today to, it's heavy corrugated, it's beautiful. I have some on my phone, if anybody wants to see it, it's halfway down in the front. But I want to get perimeter pier, block foundation, get it all leveled properly and then put it on, because I don't want it, you know, it goes down the road. I'm adding a lot more weight than normally they put a real thin aluminum on, like the one that's up here at the handyman shop. This is not going to look like that. It's going to be black, red. And like I said, we're going to have fencing put all around, I just went over that with Tom. There won't be any debris, any junk laying around there, because in my business, if I don't look good, I want to do people's work. That's, I don't want to look like Fred Sanford and have it looking like Sanford and Son in a corner. It'll be beautiful, trust me, I tell you. You could go any direction, you could go towards Adamsburg, or you could go back towards, you know, Long John Silver's, McDonald's, or down that way. It's not going to look like a lot of these properties that are there now. And like I said, I'm very prideful in that. My last name is Rain, everybody always says, "It's not really your name," or "How did you come up with that?" And I said, "Well, I was born with it." And so my dad was my mentor and I want to keep our family name going, but it's going to be a beautiful project. My plans are is to have it moved over to the weekend, get it all set up, and it will be, it will be very nice. I think it'd be something that everybody in the township will be proud of. Well, we've gotten dozens, and my wife could tell you, dozens and dozens of calls saying, "What are we doing to that corner? It really looks nice." I don't know if anybody's had a chance to drive by it. And once we sort of got the brakes put on, I put the brakes on, Rod had it done. I don't think it took a long time to do stuff. If I would have had full green light, it would have been done, looking above, within about three days. But I do have some pictures, and like I said, we have approvals, I just need to get your blessing that I can get this thing started and get the return, get some of my money back and try to make some money, if that's okay.
Gentlemen, just by way of review, this went through the Planning Commission in October, and what the Planning Commission was presented with and what I brought to you at last month's work session was this image, which we had gotten from Mr. Rain's consultant. The Planning Commission didn't recommend approval reluctantly, I told you that, but they found no reason, nor do I, to say no. A metal structure is permitted under the zoning ordinance. You guys saw this and said, hmm, see if you could go back and work something out and try and make it look better. I did send a Mr. Rain a letter last week, I did not hear back from him until yesterday, which is why it was not on the agenda, because the agenda was made up last Friday. So Mr. Rain is here tonight. Your board was the one that said, "What can we do to make this look nicer?" So we've got Mr. Rain here, I, he's made some representations. As long as he can satisfy you, he satisfies me and the Planning Commission. If you're happy with what he's proposing, if we have something definite, then I suggest tomorrow I prepare a resolution and we put this on the agenda for next Wednesday meeting for a vote. There are no other issues as far as the plan as proposed.
If you're happy with the outcome of what we discussed with the trader, whatever you want to call it, then I don't see any problem with him, you know, going through resolution and bringing it back to us.
Well, we still need to approve the site plan.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't application, so it was not on the agenda last month, so action has to be taken.
You're saying metal structures aren't permitted?
They are.
George, are you passing pictures out to everybody? And I was down there and he has improved on the site dramatically. It really looks nice. He said he got mulch and everything around there, he got skirting, thank you. So I think it'll be an improvement for the township.
And also, that picture is another place down the road. I'll show you. I took these today about 4:30, it was starting to get dark, but I only wanted to get so much time, because like I said, the weight of it, I don't know, put it in the position that I'd like to have it down in the weekend.
Andy, that handyman structure, is that a permanent structure, structure, or is that temporary in their building there?
It is temporary, but it was done completely without anybody's approval. He and I met back in August. He was looking to terminate his rent in the old Pedro Tyrocractor Building in front of Van Mure. He needed to get out of there by a certain date. We sat down very carefully, figured out his submission date, planning commission date, board of commissioners date, and he said, "Yep, I can make that all work." I sent him off with an application, I emailed him the salvo, he never came in, and one day this building pops up. So I informed him, he's got to get a site plan submitted. Again, we're going to have the same issue, because there's really no basis to say it can't be a metal building, but he needs to come in for a site plan approval, and he's aware of that.
Andy, that handyman, did you put a stop work on him?
Well, it's done. It's done. He's there, he's done what he's going to do.
Oh, he's already finished.
Pardon?
It's already done?
I believe that's it. I believe that's all he's planning to do for now. He eventually wants to build a larger building that will include a warehouse and, you know, put his trucks indoors and so forth, but he didn't have the finances to do that anyway.
Well, how did you get it off to the Department?
I don't know, and Josh sat in on the meeting with me. Josh granted an occupancy permit, I don't know whether Josh thought it was being submitted separately, I'm not sure how that happened. It shouldn't have happened.
Okay, thank you.
So the question is, does the board want to have this on the agenda and put an action item next week?
I don't see there's really no reason not to.
All right, Andy, I think the consensus of the board is to put it on for an action item next week. Okay. We'll do it next Wednesday.
Can I address the board as well on behalf of Mr. Rain?
Senator David Agger.
Josh is a victory here, he really didn't want to say anything.
I understand, not to ask a question, but all I wanted to point out was, in conjunction with negotiating, at least with the Turnpike Commission, they're not going to permit this building or the structure that's going to be here to be some kind of isolated requirements in the lease itself that's specified and is to be kept pristine clear.
Okay.
So that's all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, George. That's the only citizens on for tonight's speaking. Our next item in business would be the work session discussion topic, but we're going to change it due to planning, planning and engineering first, and then we'll go into the budget. So Andy, you're up, sorry.
Right, gentlemen, and three items on the agenda tonight. The first one is a subdivision, it's really a boundary line adjustment, S 20, 2017, the Gosar Hannan subdivision. And this is three parcels. Three parcels that are in a peninsula or corner there between Maple Lane and Brownstown Road across from the Laramore Fire Hall. As it stands now, the parcel that has frontage on Brownstown wraps around like an L shape and touches both Maple Lane and Brownstown. What they would like to do is they've arranged for a swap to take this piece of ground, make it part of the blue parcel, and take this piece of ground and make it part of the yellow parcel. So it's really a cooperative effort between the two landowners to give them each a yard that's more usable for them. Doesn't impact any utilities, no new construction proposed, it's truly just swapping some land and lines on paper. Planning Commission recommends approval of that. Any questions? Okay, next item is the Craft Grabiak subdivision, and this again is two pieces of land owned by two separate people. These are, I don't have it closer, but it's between McCarty Lane and Whitehead Lane, and again, there's a very, very deep lot here on Whitehead, and the gentleman who owns it, he said, "I can't really use all that," so he's agreed to sell this back half to the gentleman that owns this property here on McCarty. So he will end up with an L-shaped parcel, this will be about half the size of what it was before. No new construction proposed, just a swap of land area. Planning Commission also recommends approval of that. Okay. Last item we have is PNC Bank has come in, and we've looked at a dormant site that was supposed to be a Starbucks next to what was supposed to be a Walgreens, but now it's a Dollar Tree. And it was a small site, it's a difficult site, it would have worked extremely well for a Starbucks for something that didn't require a very big footprint. I thought one of the neatest things about that site was a Starbucks peak hours in the morning, Walgreens was going to be late in the day, and they had a reciprocal arena to share the parking, which is a wonderful use of land. But Starbucks wasn't to be, apparently Walgreens wasn't to be, Dollar Tree is in there now, and this land is sat empty. Walnut Capital, who's the owner of the land, has been approached by PNC Bank, and they would like to have a banking presence further west in the township than their office in Norman Hills. So they would like to build a standalone kiosk that would sit there, there would be no employees, no teller, just a standalone ATM that would be reached from the seat of your car. And they would like to use that area that's shaded in yellow, constructing a new drive-through lane off of the access road in the back. Route 30 is out here, the hillside drops off to the rear, Walgreens, Dollar Tree, Chesterfield is sat here. So you would come in, turn in, loop through here so that the kiosk is on your driver's side, and you can come right back out to the light. No employees, really no construction other than the kiosk itself. Planning Commission recommended approval. However, we did have concerns that a lot of that site, you can see the yellow shaded areas what PNC intends to use, a lot of that site was left blank for final determination by Starbucks of what they were going to build. They didn't do landscaping, they didn't finish the paving, all of this was to be customer parking for Starbucks. So we said, "Well, we're happy to see a tenant in there, but what are you doing with the rest of all this land space? You can't just take the little piece in the middle and say that's all we're developing, because now nothing else can go in there." So Walnut Capital was at the meeting, and they agreed they would put in landscaping in compliance with the salvo for this entire area, which is just a little under an acre. And they never put the final paving on this either, so over time that asphalt will deteriorate. They said, "You know what? The cost is about the same, we're happy to just take the paving out and plant grass and remove the curbs and along the green space, which is a great thing." So that's the plan right now, is that the new drive-through lane will be right back in here with the kiosk, but all of that paving is to come out and we will get arrangements of street trees and low-level plantings and so forth. So it'll be a nice green spot in the middle of the township for a lot of people to see every day. So they've agreed to do all that, which is what the Planning Commission requested, and given that, Planning Commission is in favor of approving this. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item, office work session, work session discussion, which will be the 2018 budget discussion. If nobody has an issue, Mr. Bruce, please, if that's okay with us. Okay, thank you. Is this going to go to Mr. Silbet or to give Mr. Turner?
I think he's going to pass it to me. Yes, considering that I wasn't involved in the, you know, the construction of the budget, I am going to ask Mr. Charlie to go review with you, and I'll be happy to ask any questions, but we did sit down rather comprehensively and went over it together, so I am familiar with what is in the budget.
Well, we're pleased to present to you the proposed 2018 budget. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to do what we've done in recent years, is to provide an overview of some of the key components and then go through some of the major department line items. So with that, an overview, the general fund budget for 2018 is proposed at just slightly over $14 million. The total of all the funds, all the budgets, is $16,000, $16,726,000. The method that we used is the method that we've used in recent years, looking at the recent history of the different line items and costs and revenues, as well as year-to-date that, where we capture some very recent trends. Each line item was reviewed with each of the directors in detail, and as Jeff had mentioned, we've also had the opportunity in the last few days to review with him, and he's up to speed on many of the major elements anyway. The presentation itself and the format is what you've seen in recent years, we didn't want to change any of that. We did want to highlight a couple of things. On the revenue side, our projections are that it's fairly stable to flat overall. There are some individual items where we increased revenues and some decreased, but the overall, overall it's very, very stable, very neutral. In fact, it's very, very close to last year's projected revenues. Some of the specifics are some of the significant components or priorities of the plan. Really, some of those are rooted back in the strategic plan of 2016. A number of those items, you may recall, we brought to you in April for a sort of mid-year update, and the idea was to, at that time, we were, we wanted to pull these items together, at least the priorities, to capture the budget, the previous budget. So we're trying to coordinate the strategic planning efforts with the budget process. A few of those that you're familiar with, the road survey that we did with robotics in Carnegie Mellon, the five-year road planning effort, a fairly substantial effort that we talked about last month, the technology analysis, and I believe that was August when we reviewed that, and all a number of recommendations that came out of that, the website, the new website that we launched in August, and has many new capabilities, and we're still developing that and working the new website. And the other priority or major project that we were emphasizing in the strategic plan was, excuse me, the park planning efforts, which are of interest to much of the community as well as the board, and particularly the comprehensive planning part of it, which we're wrapping up. And I believe next month we will be discussing essentially the end result of the comprehensive planning, and we'll move into some of the design and more detailed effort to develop the individual parks and facilities. Anyway, the road program itself, obviously always a major item, continues the higher, the higher budget amounts that we went through a few years back. This particular year's proposed at 1.1 million plus $100,000 for our rural roads, which is about 1.2 million. In addition, there's some items that Public Works does themselves, it totals another couple hundred thousand dollars. There's also the final phase of the Ardaro Road project at about $180,000. And then there's also a number of other Public Works capital project items that I wanted to highlight, including the first year for the detention facility maintenance, and the facilities proposed at Victoria Heights, that's a new item that we expect will be continuing for into the near future. There's also the issue you're very familiar with, the lack of waste area for Public Works, so the project's a fairly major project for Public Works for spoil area. And then the Colt Drive Calvert is the one project that we would, we think's a priority. There are a number of permitting and engineering and issues to resolve, but we just thought that that would be an important, it was a priority. So those, that's an additional $420,000 on that Public Works capital line item, which is about a $50,000 increase over last year. So when you add it up, the infrastructure road program and stormwater projects and whatnot, you're getting close to about a $2 million item, which I think we can handle, we think we can handle, but it's not a small number either, it's very substantial. Some of the other highlights that I wanted to mention is the townhouse renovation project, the final, it should be the final phase of it, and we did get some CDBG grant money for that, it took about $120,000, and our share will be about $90,000 for what is the rate for some of the remaining items we'd like to do. The health insurance is projected to be about a 6.5% increase, which is right around the national average. The budget does include a spend-down of the general fund in order to balance the 2018 budget, which is, which is what we have done in recent years. The amount is projected to be 2.1 million. And in the budget, I included a copy of the fund balance policy for you to look at, because the plan in recent years and going forward is, there'll be a spend-down of the reserve so that ultimately we're going to get to that fund balance policy number, it's a decision that will have to be made going forward from that point. The capital improvement plan is also provided to you, it's a four-year plan. It's, I think you're very, very familiar with that, but I think on the, on the budget side, the range is about $600,000 to about $660,000 a year. And I'm sure you're most interested in the 2018 plan, which we can discuss the various items. The latter, this is updated, this is brought to you every year, so the latter three years can be moved around from year to year. So I think, I think the plan is there for you to look at the items that we're looking to purchase over the next four years, but the focus is really next year's plan. Concerning some of the small funds, the, what we'll call Phase Two of the hydrant marker project is included in the water fund by $50,000. And I would mention the light fund will need to be adjusted, there's a projected shortage in there, and we'll need to, we'll need to collect about $16,000 in revenue in order to balance that fund, so we're working on that, and we'll bring that back to you next month. Perhaps it's worth, if you, if you had a chance to look at Appendix B, some of the items that are not included in the budget. There's a couple of capital projects, stormwater projects, Edgewood Court and Mountain View, there's also the townhouse, the paving and the parking lot, and I think this is just a matter of, you know, we just, we can't, we can't do all these projects every one year, we have to do them over several years, and we just try to prioritize them. Is it right or not? I, we think it's the right plan, but if you want to do, we could move projects around, I guess. But I think our mindset is, we'd like, these are ones that we'd like to do in the next few years, we just didn't make it this year. One of the important, one of the items that was really discussed quite a bit was staffing in some of the departments. As you know, this is, was talked about before the strategic plan, it's obviously came up through the strategic plan, particularly in the Parks Department, where it's a very lean department, and we're trying to do a lot, there's a lot of discussion about a program manager position and other positions. I felt as though we were in a situation this year, being in transition in management, with Jeff just joining us here last week, and I didn't feel as though it was probably the right time to be proposing staff additions. But I felt, knowing the organization very well, and I felt as though what we talked quite a bit about was a shared position between departments, where I spent a lot of time in parks and we're doing a lot of technology work, I felt as though, I'm seeing all the help we're getting from an intern that's very, very thrifty with technology and some of Andy's needs, I thought we could craft something like that. I'm not sure that we're all in agreement, I really thought a lot about this. I thought this was the biggest improvement we could do at the least cost, but it does add a position. But I feel as though somewhere we're going to be adding a position to, at least that's what has been discussed in the strategic plan. I wasn't sure the board was in favor of it, the interim status, we just decided to put it in as an item that we weren't including, but we've been talking about and thinking about it. I think it's something you may want to talk about too. It's not included, but it was discussed in mind. So with that, I think that's, the road plan is in there in the appendix, we did get to talk about that, so if you're, if you have any general questions, I'll be happy to take them, or if you want, we can start going through some of the department budgets.
Okay, is your department by Department of Water?
Thank you. Okay, if you, if you flip to the chart, I guess first on the revenue side, the first thing comes up, there's really not a lot to talk about on the revenue side, it's very similar to last year. I guess that some items increased. I guess that some items increased and some decreased, but the bottom line was, was very similar. Very, very similar to last year. So there's not really a whole lot to call to your attention on the revenue side. If you want to go ahead to the expenditure side, if you move ahead several pages, look on the left-hand column side, and you'll see, I'm going to go about 10 or 12, 15 pages, you'll see expenditures 1-401. The page that starts 1-401, it's the administration. If you're there, you'll see all the various line items. Again, very similar to what you've seen in recent years. We didn't really change a lot. And one item, we did increase the computer system. Some of this is related to some backup software and equipment we had to buy regardless. But we also have some items in there that we've discussed regarding some of our technology work that are captured in that number slightly higher than what was in the past year. But everything else is fairly, you know, fairly consistent with last year. The buildings in plant, that's one, again, looking at that left side, call it 1-409. And really, it's a function that mostly falls under administration, too. But, excuse me, I'll just call the last item there, capital improvements. That's where the building renovation, excuse me, button number is located. Okay, the next major department is the police department, 1-410. On the left-hand side. And I guess one item that I would point out is the 139. Not that it's that great an expense. It is an expense, though, and we've captured that adjusting the cost related to 139. And, you know, a lot of the other costs are by contract and whatnot. So the line items are there. If you have any questions or any discussion, Chief's here. I can answer those. Any questions? Yeah, and as you can see, there were some changes, maybe because we're doing some different things this year. But we didn't change a number of things, so I think it's pretty in line with what we've seen in recent years. Anyway, the next major department, the planning, the planning zoning department, it's the number of, so 1-414. And you'll see this one, again, this is another one that's just fairly consistent with numbers in the past. We did have to, we did have to increase the professional services item where it required a pollution prevention plan, that's for DEP. And we had to increase that number a bit. No questions. The emergency management, just a handful of line items there. Nothing major. Slight, slight decrease in the training budget, but otherwise, it's pretty, pretty similar to recent years. The next major department, the Public Works Department, is four, number 1-430. And as we go through, I guess what I would point out to you really was what we talked about earlier, I guess, the third, the capital projects, 420,000. Again, I think the rest of it is really, there's nothing there that I think should really get, should be called out to you in terms of being a major change or anything that you would want to know about. And the next department that comes up is Parks, Parks Department, 1-451. Yeah, you know, the Parks Department getting a lot of attention right now. I think going forward for the next few years, we'll be talking about them. It looks like next month at the work session, talking about the parks and some of the, some of the planning and some of the things we're anticipating doing and trying to organize over the next few years. That's really all the major departments. I guess the other fund transfer, a lot of the balance of budgets shown there on the last page that I mentioned. I don't think there's anything else to call to your attention. And getting into the small, small funds, you know, you may, I don't know if you have any questions. I wasn't planning on going through the capital improvement plan that's, but if you want to talk about them, the department answer here. I did mention, I did mention the waterfront project to you, and in the light fund, we need to make an adjustment there in order to balance. I did have one question. Rich, on this cold storage building, where would that be? Is that going to be like a metal type standing still building?
Yes, what I'm proposing is like an outbuilding, a metal type pool building. Initially, when, of course, when we moved down to our new facility down there, we thought we had tons of room and we'd never outgrow this place. And unfortunately, as time went on, you know, we're starting to outgrow the existing building down there. Our intentions are to store some of the equipment that we don't use normally in the winter months, tractors, the road grader, and, you know, other smaller equipment that's typically not used. We put it in this outbuilding.
Okay, now going in summer months, flip-flop it with like flowers and stuff like that?
That's correct, yes.
I have another question for Robert. And I'm not sure, this evidence room renovation. And it says in here in our description that the evidence room hasn't been updated since the construction of the townhouse. If I remember right, we've added a room in the furnace room. We've added a storage area for weapons in the old firing range. What, what are we looking at for 25,000 dollars here for it?
The inside of the current, the original evidence room, it needs completely redone. We want to put more shelving in, or we've got everything full. And we're even purging evidence faster than we have been in the past. Just, it's piling up.
Yeah, I couldn't remember. I know they had done some work, answer.
Yeah, yeah. But you actually, what you would remember it as, it's pretty much the same inside. And you just relit the shelves and storing evidence a little bit different, but it's actually out of room.
Okay, but they have been updated since the construction, because we've added?
Yeah, we added one into the furnace room, the room in the old firing range. There was a space bank back there. And, but we're still storing bikes down the road department. We're storing bikes in Bill Fennell's room. I mean, into the firing range, we got bicycles, so, I mean, it becomes at times an issue to find someplace to stick something, you know?
Yeah, I know. There was a lot of files and that being added.
Well, that's another issue. That firing range is from, actually where you stood the chute all the way to where the backstop was, both sides are completely filled with files. There's enough room for one person to walk down through there. We, we have to get either a shredded company in here and decide, you know, I know what stuff of ours needs shredded, what we've got scanned, but there's other time trip records in there, too.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, and like, you know, if we can purge some stuff and make some additional space there.
The only thing is that has to be done via a resolution because of the State Records Act.
Okay, and the other thing, as far as the lockers, there was a description that they predate the townhouse and were utilized in the old townhouse. And the old townhouse, we had wooden lockers. These lockers were new when the townhouse come in. And I know, I know when I left, they are getting in bad shape, and we've had additional officers and that. Is there a plan, what type of lockers or anything? The other reason I'm asking that is we have 28 officers. Maybe we could get up to 30, you're looking at 1,000. Okay, well, I'm projecting, if you can hear. You're looking at 1,000 dollars for a locker per locker?
Well, if you buy a multi-locker here, probably look at 600 or 700 dollars minimum, plus bringing them in, getting them installed, because you're going to have to be anchored, because some of them might be two-tiered, so you're going to have to have them anchored to the wall. There's going to be some labor involved on top of just the cost.
Okay, my main thing was clarifying a couple of things that this, they weren't from the old townhouse.
I don't know where that, that was in the budget before I took it. I just carry it through, you know?
Okay, I don't have anything else.
Mike, I have a question for you on Parks. Line 01454. I see that 2017 budget was for playground equipment at 50 grand, and we went down to 30 grand?
Yes, that was Dan's, but Dan's on vacation, so, but he'll be here Wednesday. But, yes, they, there was a fairly costly facility put in last year. And this year, he wasn't proposing that. But that item is really, I think, a lot of the rubber, they're going to put in a lot of rubberized fall areas. I bet that 30,000 dollars will win off. That was his proposal for next year, just to...
Okay, the mulch, the rubberized mulch?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And that's the entire amount?
Yes. That's what, that's what he, that's what he proposed.
So there's no playground equipment proposed at all?
No, no, that, that item this year is going to be installed in a number of places, rubberized fall areas.
Now, we're going to have a chance to relook at that, because I'm concerned. We just did the Parks survey from EPD, and it seems like we're only renovating certain parks with equipment.
The, we wanted to, we wanted to complete the work earlier than December, but it really wasn't possible. And I think the best way to answer your question is to describe the process a little bit, because we're not ready to construct facilities right now. And the reason is, what we went through is really a planning phase, a comp planning phase. But there's, you can't really go from, next month, we're going to talk about things, how much money will a lot of this cost, how much per year, and do the financial planning going forward, as well as the facilities. But the plan gave you, is going to give you a list of, say, seven things that are important. Trails, this is what the public involvement part does, the review of the parks, the facilities we have. The planning, planning is very broad. And it does call out some of the things at each park, but it doesn't really design these into the park. There's another phase that we have to go through. And I think in the spring or in the winter, we were hoping to get through all that for next year. But it's, it's not, that wasn't quite the way it worked. So let's say you want to, let's say you want to put a facility in, it'll call a park. Pick what it is, a dog park, an amphithe, whatever it might be. Well, first of all, do you need a restroom with it, whatever? You really need to sort of master plan the park a little bit and tie in all the facilities. And you also need to design it a little bit, like is your park, where would the park can go? Is there electrical? There's, we didn't do that yet. We're still coming out of the plant, planning phase. So there's just too much to do. You know, it would be easier if we used to have one or two parks and a couple of facilities we wanted to put in. But we have so many parks, and I think the planning is fairly large that we have to go through a phase here of design and some master planning before we can start plopping facilities into various locations. So I think, a little bit along the answer, but if I can put it in perspective, if it helps it, we're really coming out of the planning phase, and we haven't really designed facilities per se. And there's an effort yet to do before we're ready to.
Well, what concerns me is we're going down in the budget for playground equipment that can, at 20,000 dollars, I could show you where to use it at Hill Dog Park or any other of these parks that don't have a lot of, of equipment.
I guess my answer is that's what the director proposed for this year. He'll be here Wednesday. I think we could discuss that some more. But I, I think the feeling is there's, there's energy and momentum behind upgrading parks in the township. And I think maybe not next year, but in the foreseeable future, I'm anticipating expenditures. We're still trying to organize and outline that plan going forward. So the fact that it's 20,000 less on one item, I think, I'm guessing, you can ask Dan, but I'm guessing he's thinking, wow, we really don't want to do a lot of that this year. We're going to do the rubberized fall areas, and we're getting organized for a larger program upgrade over the next few years.
I don't normally give input, but I'd like to give in.
You're welcome.
We have been extremely fortunate this past year to have a young kid by the name of Jonathan Baskett working for us. He hasn't really worked for planning and designing, but his desk has been in our department because we had the available space. And that was the shared position that Mike mentioned. I wasn't aware that hadn't made it into the budget until I got my budget this week. But if there's any way we could stretch some funds and find a way to keep him on. He graduated from Pitt in June. He has a communications major. He has done major upgrades to our website. The kid's been able to handle anything you throw at him. He's been competent. He's been pleasant. He's been accommodating. I think he could be the answer to a lot of our various departments who needs some help but don't need another staff person. Well, Jonathan's got some time this week. Could he do that? We're talking about instituting this tracer software next year, which will make our documents and information much more available to the public through our website. That's exactly what he's been doing for us. I think he really would be the answer to our dreams as far as that goes. How much time has Mike spent on write-to-know requests in the last couple of months? Jonathan could do that. He's a communications major. And frankly, this may sound corny, but, you know, other than Juliana and Jeff, maybe, the rest of us are all on the AARP mailing list. And Jonathan's in his twenties. Plain and simply, 20-year-olds, they do everything from their phone. And they see things differently, maybe, than some of the older staff. If we want to try and encourage the kids to stick around and address their needs and try and communicate and stay in touch with them, I think he would be a wonderful way to do that. Because I know my kids, they have those buried in their phones. He's got no ways, maybe we do a township Twitter account. Maybe we can go on Facebook. I mean, there's just a lot of ways people get their information now that they didn't use to. And I'm not savvy to those, but he is. I just think he would be a real good addition to the staff, and we could somehow make that happen. I think he could serve a lot of needs in a lot of different departments.
I've met Jonathan several times, and, mostly because I have to get a lot of auto parts. But he's a good kid. He would be tremendous for this, for this township. Plus, he knows all you guys. He works for all of you already.
It's kind of like we've been able to test drive him the last six, eight months, and I think you won't find anybody that has a bad word to say about him. He's really been a good help.
At short lease. I think what happened was, he, he had the ability, and the more we gave him to do, he was able to deliver. We really grew to rely on him, as you know. We were a little short staff this summer, but we still were able to do a number of things on the technology side. The website's a lot of work. I mean, that's, that's just, that's just been a lot of work. So it would have been difficult without his help. But this, this really was, whether it's him or somebody else or someone similar, the idea was, you know, we're not gonna, we're probably not gonna hire three positions or two positions. I thought, why don't we craft, why don't we craft a shared position? And we talked about it extensively. Again, I just didn't include it because I wasn't sure the board's preference and the management change. I don't know Jeff's opinion, maybe his different opinions. And I wasn't sure it was the right thing to do. I thought it was a good thing for the organization, if you can get the right person. You know, hybrid positions may not be ideal in a lot of ways, but they are an answer to multiple needs too. So that, that's just how that discussion happened and why it was, why it's where it's at. It's something, it was something that was talked about, but we just weren't sure of the short-term approach, particularly with, you know, Jeff coming in and some of these things.
Andy, I agree with you. I, I think we definitely need to look at development, our younger employees as an investment in the future of the township. One thing I would submit to you is, and I don't know, maybe it's already been done, but what I personally like to see is a job description and a description of duty and responsibilities, how you look at employing this individual and putting in the work. So I, I think if you craft that and draft that up and present it to the board, and there we go from there.
That sounds good.
Then you would have to have a set top ground schedule. I mean, you can't just say, hey, Jonathan over here, I need you over here.
Yeah, correct. The way we would do it is, we would have to craft you a position. Obviously, make sure that the skill sets for a shared position are, can be encapsulated to one person. Because you don't want to have a skill set here, there, there, there. You're never gonna fill somebody or keep somebody there. But what we could do is we could definitely craft a job description, classify the position, recommend a salary grade in there, and we can definitely bring that back. But that would be the logical steps, as the commissioner said, in creating a new position.
Andy also worked here with that too. I think you have a good idea.
Yeah, Andy, I'd have to say that, you know, with the, you know, we're always talking about taking a township into the future with technology and that. It seems like, you know, from what you said, I don't know the void, but I would have no reason to not, you know, take your advice and that, that he could be a possibility to take us there, and has been working on taking us there. So I could give you with you and Jeff, you know, we're not recommendation, you know, let's take it from there.
We'll talk. Thank you.
Anybody have any question, any more on the budget or anything? I need your directors.
I like the thing, Mike, all the directors. I mean, I appreciate Jeff, you're kind of in a tough spot, same with all the directors. Having a void, obviously, for some months, so I appreciate that. Only other, other thing, I'll probably sound like a broken record, but I'll say it just so I'm on the record for saying it. Just looking at, you know, dispatching with nine-one-one. I always look at areas of opportunity for saving money, and that's, I hate to say easy grab, but it's an easy grab. All the residents of the township are paying already for it. And I know we would keep some staff on for the police department for office staff, but it's an area that we could reallocate. Obviously, we are in a kind of a spin-down mode with the reserve balance, but that reserve's not gonna always be there sooner rather than later. Some of us will probably still be on the board when that happens. And then the conversation's gonna be, well, if we want to keep paving roads and add a new staff, which I'm not saying that we don't need to add a new staff. It's gonna be a push from the show, where is this money coming from? So I appreciate everyone's job, but I think instead of looking at ideas always about how to spend a little bit more, you know, look at a little bit of how to save a buck or two here and there.
Well, thank you for the comment. I appreciate the opportunity to prepare the budget. It's, it's not the most difficult thing, but it's not simple either.
You didn't give much gray air, Mike, so you held up good, gave a good job.
Yeah, I'd like to commend you too, Mike. You did a great job. I, I think I agree with your position as far as waiting for the dust to settle as far as any new additions to staff. And I think a lot of the things you put in your appendix and just the way you manage things, keeping it level was great, so I appreciate it very much.
Anybody else on the budget?
Yeah, I know Zach and I are, have different opinions about this nine-one-one, but I think the service, the people that they get in this township is a personalized service, and they know the township a lot better than nine-one-one, than, than nine-one-one. But I think our township dispatcher do an excellent job for people in this township.
Yeah, I'll mirror dumb comments. I've worked with dispatchers and that, and they're, they're irreplaceable in nine-one-one and that for a service for a township. And I believe yours go to township's book about that. I'm sure if we brought it up again, they would again.
Yeah, I mean, when I bring the nine-one-one dispatcher, it's nothing against any personnel down there. I think they do a fine job, but our technology gap down there, when you guys want to talk about technology from nine-one-one to where we got is a big gap. And like I said, I look at areas to save money, not to spend a little bit extra. So if you tell me I got a new car in a front driveway, I can drive a new car or go buy an other one. I'm gonna drive one, not drive two.
Okay. Anybody else? Rod?
Just so you know, we are a backup center to nine-one-one. They went down, and we separated and took over for them. And that, when we redesigned the new radio system several years ago, that was the design intent via backup. If the system were to work, we'd go down, we'd step in to like get people down here to help us.
All three agencies?
Right.
Did we get money from the county for that?
No. Not our budget.
We didn't, we didn't get any of that nine-one-one fee that they have on the phone bill?
No.
So we did that as a county service then?
Well, we did it as a service to ourselves to the township. Simply the fact is, we still, if their system would go down, we still have fire, ambulances, and police to worry about. And we can take over the fire end if we have to. We have full capabilities of dispatching our property market share.
Aren't we asking short of dispatching down there, because they're working a lot overtime, aren't they?
Yes, I mean, they're, we're, we're short one. Twenty-seven, we're six.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on the budget? Okay, let's go to the next item, and then further board comments.
I just have one. Mike and I had a conversation, it's sort of related to the budget too. As far as the technology goes, Mike had told me, I wasn't aware of the exact status of the video. You know, I've been providing the video for a while now. But he tells me that we're close to doing that, and the township is gonna take it over, and that maybe in December you'll test run it?
We're very close. We have all the equipment. It took some time. Yeah, ours is a little more complicated, because it goes through our website, it's high definition. What can't, the acoustics in the room, the acoustics, it got into, well, Jonathan actually helped us quite a bit with solving this too. But we have the equipment, and we actually might try to install it tomorrow. I'm not sure. But it may actually be in place for next week's meeting, but I, I certainly think for December.
That's good.
Hopefully, everything goes well, but if not, we'll figure that out.
Another board of the board, if not, I need one more.
Motion to your adjutant.
Second.
Just got it. All papers are out.
All right.
Most items out of one. Be your turn, eight twenty-two. Yeah.